For everyone. Thanks for all your patience and once if you might stand and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we can get going. Okay, so the main thing is the agenda approval. Any helpers? And we've been second to accept the agenda this evening. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, and then we're gonna move on to a really awesome part. This is our Community Impact Award. And we're trying not on a monthly basis, but the board wants to present awards to students or staff or members of the public in recognition of outstanding achievement in academics and services to the community and our students. So this evening, I have a special lady here. Her name happens to be Carmen Rice, and this is what they wrote about her. "Her calm presence during stressful situations is her superpower, and that natural skill is one of the key reasons that she saved a student's life. When she noticed the situation, she immediately assessed the student, jumped in, took over, and put her CPR training to work. When the student was able and stable, she reassessed the situation, made sure the student was okay, and immediately contacted the parent and the district nurse to ensure continuous monitoring would occur. She put the student's needs above her temporary uncertainty and fear and was a true act of courage and bravery. Simply stated, Carmen Rice is an amazing educator who appreciates and approaches her work with compassion, kindness, and a great big smile while remaining focused on rigor, outcomes, and true results." Can I get you to come up here? Thank you Carmen for coming. All right. I don't even know how we can compare to that. All right, so next one, we're gonna watch visitors to address the board. And this time on the agenda is for public comment on non-agenda items. The board will not take any immediate action, but will refer concerns to the superintendent and ask him to report to the board. You have any comments? We'll be fine. No, we don't. All right, then we're gonna go on to 5.0, the consent agenda.
I'm gonna to agree.
On second.
It's then we go through to accept the consent agenda statement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And now we will move on to 6.0, all of our new business. And the first one is 6.1, our PSC report. Our email, yeah, Watkins from our high school. How are you today?
Good.
Awesome. Wanna, the letter that works for you.
Hello, Ron. I'm Jenna Watkins, and I'm the English Relations Officer. I'm just kind of getting back into stuff at our school. In the week, elections were announced on March 20th. Those elected were A.C. President and Principal, Vice President, which is Tishler, A.C. Treasurer, Alvin Anderson, Secretary is Piper Carlson, CBIAS Coordinator is Emerson Marahan, uh, COO Coordinator is Alicia Miguel Montalongo, and then Zadec is Abby Wong. And I forgot to mention that this week is actually class officer election week, and we are really excited because every grade has at least one position running up close. So we're really excited for some competition. And then next is, um, this is our blood drive was held on April 4th. Um, I don't have a bad count on how many lives we sold, but it was really successful with like people coming in pretty often, so they're like well attended. Great. And then leadership held their first ever formal wear dive on April 5th. We collected donations using vans that were placed at local businesses around town. In total, we were able to give away 11 jackets and one suit. We'd like to make this event bigger in the future, and we thought we would come up with statues so that we can get even more donations, we can even multiple products, like online shopping for some formal wear at the prom. We had a gift for egg hunt. Uh, we helped, we helped our first ever egg hunt. We had hundreds of eggs around the school that were filled with candy, and then outside two golden eggs that were filled with ham seconds. Um, and this was a big hit, and we are definitely gonna do it again in the future. A lot of people love that. It's the fundraiser is being made there too, according to the fourth grant is a standard hunt this year. I believe for me personally online raising on the app for it, um, the price is $10 to play, and you have teams of five to ten. And see your next steps. This is actually something that I was kind of in charge of, um, in honor, putting it in honor of National Decision Day, which is when they're on May 4th. Look at that, he has a wall, and you're coming to show off our seniors and what they're doing at their high school. So that is our wall as of just a few hours ago, we just put it up. And then around those, uh, flags, we're going to have our seniors, uh, the water, as you see on the right, um, and it has their name, where they're going to college, and then if they have any scholarships, we wanted to honor that as well. And this week is also staff appreciation week. On Monday, we did raffle, uh, each period for prizes such as gift cards and we even saw it. We also gave out handwritten notes to every staff member along with a small flyer to show. Um, and then we have also given out their snacks and sodas and copies. The map on the right, it's just some stuff that we have both over from our snack cart, so we put them in book to the staff rooms for anyone who missed it or didn't pick enough. Prom is coming up on May 15th from St. Helen's High School at the Mission Ballroom in Hope Row. This theme is Hollywood Red Carpet. Tickets are $45, and they are actually now open to all students, not just parents and students. And here are our spirit days. Monday is pajama day, Tuesday is skirt day, Wednesday is autumn day, Thursday is go back Thursday, and Friday is off event day, so you will dress up like something that starts with the first layer of your name. And then there's some upcoming things that we have. OASD Spring Conference is April 4th coming first. Um, that's something that leadership goes to, and we learn more leadership skills, one idea about other events that we can do, just overall how to better improve our leadership team. A sophomore class fundraiser is coming up on May 15th. Uh, we don't have much information about that, but it is going to be a trivia night. And then more, which is kind of like the anti-prom for underspokenness, is being held on May 20th. And the theme for that is clues. Is that everything I have?
Thank you. All right, so we're going to 6.2, our school report, first going first this week.
I think we have, I think we have a few folks who aren't feeling well. I know we've got a, one of our principals, that MEL training, so I think we'll start with elementary and looking right at Mr. Pink. If you wanna come up and give your report, you may be the elementary team.
Is that candidate?
I've got four schools on the agenda, so it's gonna take about 20 minutes or so.
Let me start here.
Takes that anyways.
Go for it.
Good evening, school board. Roger Pink, principal at McRide. Luckily, the three elementary principals we talked and have some very common successes, and that's a good thing to share. We really love to emphasize our recent adventure up in Seattle with RTI at work. Um, that's just been extraordinary for us as a school district. We're really excited to move forward with that, you know, ultimately it's best for students. And so we're really excited about continuing that work. It is going to be a multi-year process, but, but staff are dedicated and already committed to it, and they're sharing that enthusiasm with other staff who are kind of supporting us.
Will you share what RTI means for all these folks that are fantastic?
Yes. Um, RTI stands for Response to Intervention in Academic Behavior, Student Support, as well as Extension Opportunities for Students. So any students who might need a little extra, there's systems in place for that, as well as students who are advanced and need more, uh, additional math and read and writing, there's also support systems for that. So it's, it really serves every student, and we're excited about that. All three elementary schools, as well as the district, there's still been thunder, but, but we are also very excited to work on these disciplines. And, um, uh, there's fantastic work regarding students with social emotional learning, various needs, and again, it's best for students, best practices, and we're excited to continue working with that. And that said, we'd wrap up, and we'd love to thank the board for allowing elementary staff teachers to report planning dates. Teachers appreciate that, taking advantage of those, that time, and really it makes good progress. So that's been, that's been the voice, and we wanna make sure that we share that with the board, so thank you very much for that, and staff handling up that. One thing that we are working on and continue to is just making sure that our abilities are continually staffed. It's been ongoing struggle all year with sub shortage. But that challenge though, it's, we appreciate the district and HR within remedy, with a new system that's rolled out, I think, on Monday, May 1st. And so there's a partnership there. I hope I'm not stealing thunder, but we're just all very excited about that. Again, that's for students. Okay, I would love to speak up for Ms. Annie Boylan, Director of Early Learning Positives. She's just very excited about completing three ready play kindergarten events. And we're excited about welcoming our future, you know, students into our schools, parents and members, response event. Excited, uh, there's an event next Thursday night, May 4th, at each of the three elementary schools, and that's our kindergarten welcome 2023. There's gonna be tours, cookies, bus ride for the future kindergarten, so it's a really fun event. We're looking forward to again welcoming in our new students, meeting new parents in this entire district. Another excitement is Danny wanted to share that teachers are invested. They're attending a conference this weekend in Bend, and this is for early learning to support pre and kindergarten, uh, learning, whether they're there against school students. Something that Danny mentioned that she's working on, if we're ever aware of this, it's just really funding for kindergarten camp, as a whole, if students may get participate in our community this summer, maybe guys transition to the ball.
You're in good shape. Well done, Mr. Pink.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'll wait that third time.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
All right, looks like Mr. Chris is coming on up here. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. To the board. I am Chris William, from St. Helens High School, and I'm here to do our Riverhawk School Report. So we have two big highlights to focus on, our two successes that we're, that we're experiencing right now at the middle school, and that starts with track. Uh, we have 92 students out for track, uh, a large, large group. Uh, we have the good news is we have amazing, very skilled coaches for students, um, and they're developing skill sets and talents that they had no idea they even had as kids. And it's pretty amazing, and we talk about, as we're working through our strategic plan, we're focusing on these ideas as a district of like inclusivity and belonging. This program is exemplary of that. The amount of students that want to be out there and are enjoying the time out there and feel like they have a purpose and a place, it's pretty cool to see that, with those school kids who, we all know definitely at this age are really working through those things, and they look like, well, look like, again, track is the place for everybody, so it's been really awesome. Um, we have had our first home meet a week ago, and we have our second one coming up this week on Thursday, so I encourage you to go over to High School in the evening on Thursday and check out our track half days to be. Uh, the second highlight I wanna focus on, it's a new event that's coming to the middle school. It's something that Scott and I got a lot of feedback about in our parent listening session, and it's the, what we are calling the fifth grade lineup. Um, so we have completed our fifth grade forecast with our counselors and some of our elective or enrichment teachers who went into the elementary schools, to the fifth grade classrooms and presented on what middle school looks like and what they might be learning or experiencing when we get there. And then we notified them of this event's coming up in June, and it'll be on June 2nd. And what's going to happen is our eighth graders are going to have their eighth grade end of the year celebration that day. They're only be out of the building with some of our staff, and they're gonna be at Oak's Park, um, doing their eighth grade celebration. While they're away, our seventh grade students will go up to visit with eighth grade teachers and experience what's coming next. Our sixth grade students will be with our seventh grade teachers, and our fifth grade classes will come up and experience a day at the middle school. Um, we're gonna walk through kind of some really basic schedules, they'll have shortened classes, 10 to 15 minute long classes, but just to get that kind of first experience of what is it like to go from class to class. And then they'll get to see and experience some of the activities, clubs, and things we offer at middle school. So it's, it's something we're really working on and developing. It's complex, the logistics are difficult. Supervision is gonna be the key, and I think we'll do it well, but I also know there's always room for improvement when you're trying it for the first time. So we're looking forward to that opportunity. So I shared with you the two big highlights of what's coming. Something we're working on and something that's been a real challenge this week is we started, um, our statewide assessments. We opened up with assessing the ELA, which is the English language portion in all grades. And, um, the response to this in some grade levels was very positive, and we did a lot of pre-teaching and scaffolding on how to prepare, uh, how you should come to school those days and be ready for this type of experience. Um, and then we can give the families about how to, uh, opt out if you need to, or how to participate well. Well, when it came time for the testing, uh, we found really quickly that we had a very strong opt-out culture in our eighth grade classes. And it's been, it's been a bit of a struggle following procedures, using the coaching and the processes that the, uh, was not the approach. And so we faced a lot of dysregulation, a lot of disruption, a lot of refusal, um, and a lot of pulling kids out to try to communicate with families, build them in the right place to be successful, whether that means opting out the right way, or whether it means supporting what their concerns are, what their need is like. Um, but it wasn't something that was easy. An example today, we, we had an opt-out room from eighth grade. When I visited that classroom where they were, you know, staying out of this testing environment, um, it created, it was a lot of behavior management. I walked into the seventh grade opt-out room, every kid on their phone looks doing their work and missing work for assignments from other classes for the alternate assignments that, that the teachers have to bother them. So I had to go to the kitchen, got a bunch of hard pops, and brought them in and said, hey, good job, you guys, thank you for, you know, if you're not gonna do the test and you're still engaging in your education, it's pretty awesome. So there were highlights in there too. My takeaway is we need to do a better job of communicating and supporting the families with what state, what state assessment's involved and how to respond appropriately. We'll get better. So that, that was our big challenge this week. Math is coming up next, so we're gonna rethink some of our systems and do some extra communication and try to get in, you know, right into the math, which is made.
About what percentage opted out?
So last I looked at the list, so here, just an example of how the opt-outs were happening, uh, six opted out to start the day. So that morning when I walked in, I had a list of, um, six students whose parents had followed the process and submitted the documents, and we had a plan for those six students. By the end of the day, we had over 26 opt-out. And then the next day, you know, things like students going to the class and texting them on their cell phone in the hallway, getting the audience, I don't wanna do this, and then a phone call comes asking for that channel, not to be in testing, but to be in location without the documentation. So then that conversation is a fairly difficult conversation at that point, and sometimes, yeah, takes a little while, so. But I don't have the exact percentage yet. I will know probably tomorrow on the last day, and I need that information to be available. Of that cohort, yes. So, um, it was, it was a unique response that we didn't expect. And I had previously like an assessment system, I hadn't seen that before. Typically, students who opt out would come in with a documentation. It's very interesting is, is that's how it went in sixth and seventh grade. We didn't have those same issues at those two grade levels. So after we leaned how we can give to the eighth grade, we're, they are almost an active group with, right? They are at least experienced in school group. They've only had a couple years with us versus starting in the sixth grade. So all of those things, as school leaders and teachers, we have to help for as we can about how to support them in the beginning.
Yeah. Having an eighth grader and one that actually did opt out, um, but she gave several asks, and she has an AP, but her dad did the opt-out. I don't know how much notification they gave. I was like, oh, you opted out? Because it has always been, so maybe it's on the flip side, but they're the most advocating class.
That could be.
And she took it upon herself, and then however that start the trend of wanting to opt out.
Yes, you were describing middle school very well.
Yeah.
They don't wanna do that, I'm gonna do that, right? But the test already started, right? So we're not gonna do that right now.
Yeah.
All right, that's my reporting. Questions? Thank you.
And Katie, now send more.
The most, the most advocating class.
We would learn to advocate, they make good direct.
Seventh graders are at least okay.
All right, good evening. I'm Dr. Katie Wagner, from St. Helens High School. So I know Amelia did an amazing job in sharing all of the great things that we are doing at St. Helens, and in the last month since I've seen you, I just wanna go through all of these amazing successes. So, um, just about a week and a half ago, we had Congresswoman Bonamici came and did a visit at our high school. She took a tour through our CTE program, so we started in Nettles, went through, or I'm sorry, we started in Otto, went through Nettles Woods, made our way over to Culinary, Early Childhood Education, had an opportunity to interface with her about federal legislation around the mental health for educators, after she has been sponsored. And so really making, uh, making that an opportunity to really advocate for the needs of our educators and our students in a variety of reasons and ways. And so she also purchased, um, her little leather keychain that was made by our Lyons Manufacturing Crew, which is head up by Peyton Telling, who just received the Rotary Student of the Month award. So that was a really special opportunity for our students to meet with a federal legislator and to have her purchase something and, and take that from our Lyons Manufacturing Program. So it was a great visit. One of the things around mental health is that I also talked to her about sources of strength, which she was unfamiliar with. And as I explained the importance of belonging in a community, and here's a system, she leaned over to her aide and said, like, Sam, I've never heard anything like this. So it was exciting to be able to share some of those ideas with her as well, make an impact. So I will just kind of run through all of the crazy things that are happening at St. Helens.
Not, not too crazy yet.
We just took an amazing crew of our Hispanic and Latinx students to the Cesar Chavez Leadership Conference at Western Oregon University, and they had an amazing time building up leadership with that community. We have a marine bio trip to Hatfield Center coming up. We have choir leaving on a tour to San Francisco in two days, baseball spent spring break in Arizona at a baseball camp. We have band and choir both competing in a state competition in the next couple weeks, including percussion, which is coming up in a couple of days. We had a, uh, our reef took a group of students to Cascade PCC on a college tour, and also we had the Young Women of Purpose Conference. So we had female leadership that went with reef. We have Diesel Day coming up, so we have students going and exploring those careers. We had the OMIC Challenge Field Trip, where we had students who created a trebuchet out of, uh, 3D printing. Ours did not look the best, and we will all admit to that, but ours performed the most consistently. So that was, that was a great, great win for us. Um, we also have the Columbia County Career Fair that's happening tomorrow at OMIC, and we have all of our Nettles Two students and additional students going. We had incredible placing at Skills USA, so we've had six students placed there. We took a group of students to Malagro Theater, so our Spanish program took students to see a theater production in Spanish. Uh, we've got Oregon Decision Day that's coming up. So we just, in a short period of time, tons of opportunities for students to engage with their peers, both at school and outside of the community and moving into careers, so super exciting. We also are excited to welcome our new social worker, Ana Vargas Delara, who graduated from St. Helens High School 2014. And having someone who is close to St. Helens, who lives here, who is by name, well connecting with our community and access resources, awesome. The biggest challenge for us really this season is rescheduling athletics. So weather has not been the nicest to us. Baseball even, we've been renting out Hope Row Hawks Stadium, and they even called us to cancel a game because some high school did not cover the pitcher's mound, and it ruined the actual, the only place that's not turned. So they had, they had to postpone a game. So trying to coordinate all of that has been a really big challenge. We're getting through it though. But we're also really excited about our RTI work. We've got a guiding coalition of 13 staff that are trained in developing professional development to establish the why of moving forward with a multi-tiered system of support and, and supporting students. We are also just wrapping up our score to balance assessment with our juniors because we're getting into AP testing. So those days are determined by the College Board, so we have to make sure that we time all of our testings and we're not overtesting our students. Lots of stuff going on in lots of different areas, so this is busy time.
It's not over till fall?
Nope. Training keeps on moving.
Thank you.
Mr. Hurley, Plymouth High School. Hello, everyone. Good Wednesday evening. I wanted to start off by building off some of Chris's share, and that is, we know as adults, the importance of mistakes and failure. We can't grow or improve without them. And the first thing that came to mind sharing tonight is, um, the climate becoming culture over at Plymouth High School is having kids see the value of their mistakes and their failures. First of all, you gotta be in the game, so if we're not talking about failures from just not trying, but really giving an effort and gaining something from that and trying to do better. So that's sort of a growing culture of sorts amongst our students that I'm proud to see and will continue to support. We had a new student orientation last Thursday evening. We had a great turnout. It culminated with working with students this quarter. We still focus on our six Ps for those students, and we keep repeating ourselves back to the other students, so it becomes common mindset and language. Those Ps are being prompt, prepared, polite, having a positive mental attitude, participation, and production. And those are, again, so many things that are important to all of our lives well after their high school experience. We just sent 25 kids to PCC via our reef representatives, and we, I had, um, three different people tell me, first of all, students were allowed to go free in the appropriate areas and explore, um, whatever they wanted to. And I had three different adults come up and tell me that the kids were absolutely proud of, so very proud of my kiddos. And not just for... And not just for...
Okay, go ahead. We just lost us a little bit there.
I'm not just proud for their behavior, but because of their interest. A lot of times kids come to Plymouth and they don't think about post-high school or they don't think that it's important to them. So they came back all smiles and with ideas that they wanted for students. We are just starting to use words from the RTI and blended with the 5D cell work that we want to see teachers using in class to support kids. Sort of is connecting with the conscious discipline that we are also now just bringing into the district to schools. So I think this is a great time for my staff to capitalize on their growth. Because we all know the goal is to try to do today better than yesterday. And we all have that goal to try to retain. Lastly, I've been pretty consistent to preach to my school and my kids, especially at the beginning of the last two quarters, not to pick up the shovel. And if I say that with any of my kids in this room, they'll tell you what that means. And that means don't start digging a hole now. Because if kiddos start digging a hole and they think it's okay, all of a sudden they're three or four weeks into the quarter and it's an oh no moment. They've got a stack of things that they're behind and they're missing. Where I've really been able to connect and change mindset, I've got kids that were straightups that got all ages of these this last time. So they know, and they acknowledge that, oh, it's much easier one day at a time to let it go. So I feel like we're on the crest of both changing culture and getting the most, best out of our students over there. And it's going to be an exciting spring. Lastly, we are also planning to go to these days as well because we have gone in the past and we've got good swapt into the industry. Hopefully that...
No.
I, 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 thank you.
So you're hearing a lot about RTI Response Intervention. We should have some of our leaders, maybe our teaching and learning team, share at another meeting. But really, that's one way that we're addressing the lost learning that we all know took place during COVID. In addition, it's just a good practice. We hear a lot about interventions as well as extensions. And it's trying to meet all students where they're at, providing the support so they all can achieve and reach their full potential. And that's what we'll try to do. I'm glad to hear things are going well in the schools and we'll do more and more about that.
Well, then we'll go on to 6.3, but this is our teaching and learning update with Lisa Martin and Mike.
Good evening. It's nice to be in front of you again in a while. And with this team, our first time. I guess after retirement, I have to get in a position where I can have a public point. But we're just really proud of this department. And I want to reiterate right from the get-go that Rupen, Martin are, have been just working really hard, keeping the work that teaching and learning has been tasked to do. My current status just comes in and that they just have things going. And I appreciate how hard they work. And last year, you know, they stepped in classrooms from K-12 and were taken out of their position. And this year, they're supporting those in target well. And so they really have two full-time jobs. And they're doing a great job, so I want to give them a shout out. But thank you for giving us some time. We really wanted to share with you some of the things that we have. So we thought we would discuss with you tonight about our professional development that we've been providing and partnering with Scott with Leadership and Building for High School. And our ELA process as well as our math adoption process. So looking at the next slide, we, this is really the challenge we face. And we want to get to the right side. You've probably seen a similar picture with a baseball diamond, you know, kids looking over the fence. And this is, the difference about this is the challenge we face is forefront of our workers at equity and making sure that we have tools for all. But our team, the forefront of our minds is getting to that justice. We want to change systems in our school districts to make sure that we have equitable access for all. And that is just what Scott was explaining about response intervention. That's how we're doing that in our school, getting that started. So the professional development that we have been working on with our leadership team, and our leadership team, you know, as well as primarily with our elementary K-5 teachers. We've been working, our group led the math adoption process. We're finishing up the English Language Learner process. And then you can see a variety of things that we've done with staff. Our PLC reboot, which is Professional Learning, we rebooted with our elementary staff last spring through Michelle Tullock and her work with Connie Siskelman. We had a new teacher academy this year. We had our current educators that we trained and we use them in classrooms. And Pete's leading got them emergency licenses. And a big shout out to Pete. Our team and Pete are going to COSA in June to present to, to COSA about leaders, about what St. Helens did. So we're pretty excited that we...
The document we just passed out, one of the things that we were hearing from staff is how all these initiatives, they didn't see the connection. And so what, working with Scott, we developed this initiative alignment document. And as you're looking at it, the five circles represent the five Ps, five dimensions of teaching and learning from the Center for Educational Leadership. And at our last cell meeting, I actually gave one of these to Mr. McCormick, who's been working with our district the last two years. And he was just amazed at the sound of it. We actually aligned all our different initiatives within the five Ps. And there's many more that aren't even on here. But this has really helped leadership and the teachers really kind of understand how they're all aligning and starting to connect all the dots. And we just need to keep this work going so that we can get that long-term equity, which is the justice fixing the system.
And we have used this in our planning, just to make sure if we get off track, we can make sure that we are sticking to the five Ps and our initiatives.
This is our essential question. We have been using it as we've been working with teachers around our RTI work. So this also lines with Avid. So we have purpose engagement and assessment up there just to remind us this, what is the purpose of our work? Keeping us engaged. And then it could also lead to the part of the assessment that we're working through. So again, our focus is on equitable access and a guaranteed viable curriculum. That is our goal.
So when we've been meeting the teachers on their professional development days that you have provided to them, so I speak for them. Thank you for giving them that time for professional development and then also giving us time to be able to have access to teachers during the day. So this is just what, one of the projects that we asked teachers to do coming out of the professional development days is to meet at the grade level. You can move on to the next one. We asked, we gave curriculum maps to the K-5 teachers. And we asked them to go through at a grade level, district's grade level, to consider what would be essential standards to learn before, in this case, third grade. What does every third grader have to know coming out of third grade? So they were charged to have common essential standard for their grade level after this time that we had with them. So that, they've already determined that. We have a finalizing process with them. But it was exciting to see the, all the grade levels working together from all people. And the other thing that we tasked them to do is to kind of build a storehouse of collaborative strategies that they are using in their classroom. So that way, teachers could go in and look and see what kind of collaborative strategies they're using with students. And these are strategies that we've embedded into our professional development with them. Some of them, some of them are teachers that are using in classroom and we have those strategies with them. So we wanted to honor the work that teachers have done by giving you a sampling. Because you can go slowly through these and see some of the things that some of the teachers have done. That's kindergarten brainstorming in Bethany's classroom at the pride. First grade teacher at Columbia City. So all K-5 teachers have access to this link. And they can go in and think about a concept that they're teaching and see which engagement strategy that they could have to be tasked to. We can show you there are several that we can maybe under at. Sentence frame. And far away. See that these teachers are dedicated to their students by the strength of the union to keep them engaged. This grade and this in the park. And this Conscious Discipline, Michelle is not able to be with us tonight, but she is a member of our team as well on the behavior side and really has been working with staff and PV, providing PV with her staff around Conscious Discipline. And next week, our PV day is all Conscious Discipline with an outside speaker coming in who's very dynamic. And staff will really enjoy that day. She came earlier in the year and very engaging in people. And on Saturday, we have her come out.
One of the other things that we were tasked with this year was finishing up our ELA adoption. And we worked with the high school teachers and they decided to go with Mudella. That's kind of their core and that supports the informational text as well as some of the other things that they're doing with knowledge studies up there. Mudella has been embedded in it. And it's, Mudella is a product where all students are able to access it because they have different Excel levels on the same text. So if a student is really struggling and has a very low Excel level, they can still read the article and interact in any sort of classroom discussion. As well as if they have a really high Excel reading level, they get the more robust and the vocabulary is changed. Middle school opened up resources. And elementary went with McGraw-Hill Wonders. And we were able to work with McGraw-Hill. They have some great things embedded in their product that we're able to have them line item out. But we could use the ELD transform that grant money to pay for that. So we can kind of open their pockets. And we're looking at doing some of that with the math adoption as well. And speaking of the math adoption, Mr. Stockwell asked us to take this on as well this year. And he wanted to be able to order July 1st. So we kind of map mapped all the way so we can make sure that we get everything that we needed to do done with the staff. And they were, you know, they were engaged every night that they came. They did the KCO work on their own. And it was actually a very great experience. And I think they all really appreciated it.
We're just going to kind of walk you through what that process looked like. So we had the same essential question every time we met, which was kind of lofty, but it was built on our beliefs. How can we select a math curriculum that aligns with our district vision and plan? Is culturally responsive to those current best practices in mathematics which supports all students? So this is what kept us grounded in our work. And we revisited it every time we came back together. So with that, we really wanted to go with research-based best practices. So we did a book study with the team. And this was a, this is a resource that was highly recommended by Oregon Department of Education, Principles to Action. And it talks about the eight research-based essential mathematics teaching practices that you have in front of you. So that's really how we came lit up with our position paper. Dope into this book and had really quick conversations about what those practices look like. So just briefly, the mathematical practices, they shift our thinking to envision what it means to be mathematically proficient. So focuses on application, reasoning, communication, and then a variety of representations throughout the content. And that's what we were really looking at when we were trying to find a math resource that's framed. So this is just something that popped up within that resource that we really kept at the forefront. So as we worked through the process, we were committed to finding a greater risk curriculum that provided access for all of the students.
And so what we had everybody do was go back and talk to their grade level teams. And then we had them reflect on the eight different practices and what it meant and what, how they stood with their colleagues. And they sent us from all the different levels their thoughts. And we compiled those into the position paper that you have. And then we had them review it and we did a couple edits. There wasn't a whole lot. Because really, from kindergarten through 12th grade, they were all aligning with the book that we were, the book study on. And so they were all kind of on the same page.
So we just wanted to highlight some of the, we identified some Avid engagement strategies throughout the process so that they could bring them back to their own classroom as well. So one of the things that we did was a world cafe. And we had them write in two middle school, high school teams. And then they had to brainstorm on chart paper the two, the four original choices. And then what the pros and cons were. And then once we did that with our math adoption team, they then brought it back to their building and then they replicated that activity. So that we had more voices and we were, you know, resources together. And this is just the recital. So they had a person representative, they stayed behind. So one person was the spokesperson. And then they were, they were the responsible ones to share the rest of the team. The hope was that they did this at their school. They didn't do this at their school, but we wanted them to alter type within their classes as well. They're great. We gave that activity.
But it was a surprise, there was some disagreement. Middle school and high school, they wanted, they wanted to align especially with the integrated. So it was an easy agreement there. Middle school all chose the same material. High school all chose the same. There was elementary where there was a split between the two. And so Brooke came up with the idea of doing philosophical chairs with the elementary staff and then having the middle school and high school kind of be on the outside. And then when they, they went through this process of talking about what the strengths are, what the weaknesses are of each one, then the middle school, high school people had to pick a side. And ultimately, that's how we were able to decide which one. And I believe it came down to which one was more rigorous. And so they chose the more rigorous one.
I think we might work on that a little. Let me help you. Sorry. Yeah, we did. So this is the philosophical chairs process that we went through. And as Martin said, we had, it was really challenging for elementary to come down to one decision. So we started with a question and I just chose one envision as a best resource that should be recommended to the school board. With that, they had to present their position and then they went back and forth. And I gave them a little bit of a whirl as well. And they did come to a conclusion based on the feedback from middle school and high school that they had questions. And so while they were all in agreement with what we wanted, that to look like in the first place.
Was there any hurt feelings? Do they have the, like stamps of get behind?
I thought it went pretty smoothly. I mean, there was some teachers that bounced back and forth and were both hats and that's fair. But the middle school and high school asked really good public questions. I think more of them aligned K-12. So that was really helpful.
It was a fascinating process. I got to sit in and observe. And there was like three or four over on one side. And then they started switching sides as each one convinced the other until they all ended up with, yeah, this is where we want to go. So I was really kind of, kind of fascinated.
And that's what we do too. So hopefully they, we can have that.
So maybe the lesson was not math. Maybe the lesson here was not math.
And that's what we wanted to do. We wanted to, yes, our task was to choose the materials that we would be using for the next seven years. But we've always tried to put, tried to do them, that the teachers could then take back with their classroom view on that part of, we'll, we do our part of it.
This is just a slide to show what the volts of engagement were for that activity and to kind of post it in the background. And this is how I always set up my classroom profile for the activity.
So what we're proposing to the board to is vote to adopt these materials. So elementary went with Envisions as their core curriculum. Middle school decided to go with Ed Gems. And high school went with Envisions Integrated. So they're going to continue with Integrated 1, 2, and 3. And what's interesting is that elementary and high school chose the same publisher. And as I was looking through some of the documents from the publisher, I found that we can actually get the textbooks in Spanish. And so I reached out to our ELD teachers yesterday and they kind of looked at it and they would like to order Spanish versions for their newcomers. Not very many of them, so we're getting a quote for that to be able to, to put that onto the ELD brand. So that when a newcomer comes in, if it is a Spanish speaking student or a reading student, they have the textbook that they can read in Spanish alongside, as they're getting instruction in English. And hopefully that would help improve so they can, you know, learn how to read English. And so we're ordering that K-5 and then that's the type we love to do.
We just want to say thank you for allowing us to present, but also have a department in the district. We feel like it's important for us to be able to help the work continue. And the teachers have support and principals have support. There's Lawrence Scott in the, you know, in his chair. So thank you so much for allowing us time and supporting us for that.
Before you guys step off, I, most high functioning school districts, high achieving, have a strong teaching and learning department. And you can see by what they've outlined, how they're aligning curriculum K-12, how they're supporting not only teachers, but principals in the work. This is critical for adoption processes and moving our district forward. So I'm excited and hopefully we'll be able to have them continue. They mentioned this piece. This seems pretty simple, but this is pretty big when they talk about the five Ds. That's our instructional framework on best practices of how you teach. And so this is the core of all the work and that's why everything is fit under here. So it's very exciting. Districts our size quite often will have a teaching and learning department three or four times as large as ours. But I'm not sure if they're as productive as our team. These guys have really knocked it out of the ballpark. And with a half-time leader and our two teaching and learning folks supporting Lewis and Clark and Martine with her work. So you guys are doing fantastic work. So thank you very much.
All right. So now we'll go to 6.4. Their student representative is going to be the board and I'll turn it over to helping freedom.
All right. So we've been discussing this for the last couple of meetings now. About my replacement for next year. Document practices by saying, following document is in regards to the passing on of the position of the student representative to the St. Helens School Board. This is meant to be, this is meant to guide the members of the school board and the superintendent, both current and future, as well as our associates at the St. Helens High School in the proceedings regarding the aforementioned detailed position. I go into the roles and duties of the student representative as I have interpreted them in my time. The current duties include represent the students of the St. Helens High School in the St. Helens School District and attend all required school board meetings. I would like to expand upon these duties according to the following. Allow for and provide opportunities to meet with students, teachers, or administrators from every school in our school district. With these meetings, they will get detailed information as to what the students' wants and needs are, how the school is addressing them, and what can be done to improve. Students must be elected to their position through a school-wide, student-driven election, with elected representatives overseeing the election process of their possible successors. Student representatives shall meet with their successors in the month that their power is handed over in July. Draft a detailed report at the end of the academic year detailing their takeaways from their time in this position, what they would want, what they would like to see changed in the following year, and what their successors and failures were. Any questions regarding the roles and responsibilities?
The only thing that came to mind is on the one part, the student representative, we're meeting successors and not till July. Do you think, maybe it wouldn't be for you this year, but do you think that could ever be an issue for future students that may be even already leaving the class right after graduation? I don't think, I think cannot possibly still be here by July.
That is a possibility. In that case, however, I believe it would be up to the student representative to acknowledge that, bring it up to the school board and meet with them as early as possible. Even if it's, even if the election process has not officially concluded or a successor, one single successor has not been selected yet, they would at least meet with their possible contenders. And they would, and they would explain their processes and basically everything that I outlined.
I'm wondering, Colton, if we could amend it and just have like prior to July. Because then when we have the person appointed elected in late May, then you got from May till July. And I need that light.
I think possibly it would be a good idea if somebody was elected that they start to attend meetings to start getting a flow on what the prior person is instead of waiting till July.
Yeah, I was thinking May and June as well.
Okay. And I think it needs to essentially have no more expectation on the prior person than the end of school. Because I don't think it's fair for that person if they're leaving and launching their own life to then have to set that up. So I'd rather not have that pressure there.
Okay.
Actually, can I give you a little more feedback?
Oh, yes.
Just please. As a student representative to the board, I feel like maybe in the first part that we could change it in the helping guide the members of the school board or to bring a youth voice to the district.
Okay. So I would just tweak that, like tweak the wording of that a little bit to add that.
Yeah, because you're expressing your opinions. You're not necessarily making decisions.
Okay.
Very valid and, but you can't guarantee that you are getting the collective whole youth voice from the high school, even in the survey, per se.
Yeah.
So they're your opinion and that we're very grateful for. But I think it just gives an opportunity to have you express those and then not be exact.
Yeah. All right. Now, I'm not going to share every single word in this document because it is like 10 pages long.
That'd be my other feedback. Maybe limited to four pages.
Yeah. I'm thinking just like share the meat and potatoes of each, of each section. Like share the important details that could possibly spark discussion or questions.
I think, and I apologize to interrupt you, Colton, but you're good. I think this, you've put a lot of work into this. And one of the things that we said as the first student representative, we want you to analyze and look through it. And so I really appreciate just the work that you put in to share, here's what I'm seeing. And, you know, although I would agree with Ms. Smith that let's break it down. I think having your thoughts on paper for us is a little bit, so thank you for that.
I would like to address the qualifications as I have perceived them and as have been laid out by the school district. Qualifications for the student representative, I believe, should be as follows. Student must be entering their senior year or a current junior of high school at the St. Helens High School. Student must be of good academic standing with a signature from an administrator or a teacher at the St. Helens High School. Students must not have ever had any suspensions or expulsions from the St. Helens High School. Student must have attended the St. Helens High School for at least one academic year prior to running for office and have plans to attend the following year. Student must have participated in at least one of the clubs, sports programs, or other school-sponsored activities at the St. Helens High School. And student must be available for all of the required meetings, including regular meetings and work sessions. The only exemptions for missing meetings are illness-related absences, conflicting school events, or family emergencies. If students do not meet the minimum qualifications, they can fill out an additional section on the application form, complete with an essay question as to what qualification they do not meet and why, and have it be signed off by the St. Helens High School administration or by a core curriculum teacher such as language arts, mathematics, science, or social studies.
So the only feedback I have on this one is I think Mr. Hurley touched something very important, which is mistakes breed growth. And so when we talk about suspensions and some of those other things, how many different pathways to suspensions? So I would recommend that we adjust that to any suspensions in the election year.
Okay.
Expulsions is a different conversation. But I think suspensions, oftentimes, sometimes we got to go through some really rough growing. And then that's a very good point and perspective to bring to.
Okay. And I wanted to make this as inclusive as possible in terms of academic standing, in terms of participation in selectivities. And I do understand that you do have some students who freshman, sophomore year, were not really of good academic standing, but come their junior year and senior year, they collected themselves and really pushed hard in order to go above and beyond to get that good grade. And originally, I was thinking a minimum 3.5 grade point average. But with working with Mr. Stockwell, I saw that, you know, those students who may not have really taken their education seriously until their junior year may not have exactly that, but may have like a 3.0 or like a 2.75 or something like that. But are still good enough to where they can, where they can rise above in any given situation. And so I wanted to really add that last section as an exemption for those students who maybe do not meet the minimum qualifications, or at least not all of them, and give them an option to still be on this board. And then we go into the application and election processes. The application, I think, should include a resume, complete with their name, education, awards, school, community activities, paperwork experience, and volunteer experience. An official copy of their high school transcript, two letters of recommendation from faculty at the St. Helens High School. This can be any faculty, teachers, administrators, even students. The applicant can note the individuals writing the letter through classroom instructions, school-sponsored clubs or sports, school-sponsored community activities, where there's a St. Helens High School staff advisor overseeing. These people cannot be family members or legal guardians. And as well as one letter of recommendation from a community member of Columbia County. The applicant can note the person through work experience, club, club sports, volunteer service, religious affiliation, or other community activities. Again, they cannot be a family member or legal guardian.
So I do like the process of practicing some of those long-term skills of applying for a job or doing some of those other things. So I do appreciate that.
It goes into our election process, which I will not go into now because that'll take forever. But some just general rules and regulations for elections. I truly tried to base this on our St. Helens High School Associate Student Body and Class Officer election process. Because I took a look at our election bylaws and instead of trying to reinvent the wheel, I decided to just simply repropose it. And so I truly based this off of that. And I don't have that document on me right now. But if you really want to, I think, I believe it is on our high school website.
It would probably be really neat at this time to utilize policies and, or even your handbook, that you could quote areas where they need to follow and give them the opportunity to look them up.
Selection and position contingencies. Since we are probably not going to be able to do an election this year, that'll probably have to take place next year since we are getting to this so late in the game. I will talk about the position contingency. In the event that an elected student is no longer able to fulfill their duties for any reason up to the last month of the academic year, the members of the St. Helens School Board will host an emergency election following the same procedure as the election contingency plan listed above. If a student fails to fulfill their duties, they will then be expelled from the student representative position at the discretion of the current members of the school board. And the election contingency, I probably should have talked about that because that's how I'm wanting us as a school board to choose my successor for next year. Because we're probably not going to be able to do a true election like I would like to do. I would like to do as follows. In the event that not enough eligible students apply or in the case that both selected students are disqualified from the election, the members of the school board will select between three and five certified teachers at the St. Helens High School from different departments to nominate up to three students to serve as the student representative. The teachers will be instructed to select students that meet the minimum qualifications. These students will then interview with the members of the St. Helens School Board. And the members of the board will then select one of the nominees to fill the position. I believe that is a fair and just process. That can be utilized for emergency situations and as well as for the current situation that we are in. Any thoughts?
I'll take you back to this one little part right here. It's, well, you're aware, you put dates where the one application is going to be submitted by. Okay. So on that day by 5 o'clock, yes, we do have a work being that night, work session. and make sure that it's on the agenda to discuss those applications. But if we are no longer having a meeting on May 17th, and so at this point, if we don't decide it that night, we do not have another board meeting cleared until it's cleared course, which would be passed when your representatives need already be campaigning and doing all the good stuff.
And that's why.
So maybe we could try to set up that we actually vote that night on May 10th and have the, on our work session, that's our asking. That way you can have the information that night.
Yeah. And with this, like, emergency selection process, I didn't want to utilize applications. I wanted to stray away from applications.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think maybe this late in the game, you may need to just put an ask out of those interested because it is a time commitment. And then after you have a pool of those interested, maybe your admin takes it from there and is able to bring those that would be able to fill the duty.
Yeah, you probably will gather a survey to your student body, and then that at least gets the pool. I do want to make sure that this is an inclusive process, and while it's important that we do identify people, that those that have an interest have the ability to express that interest and be able to put their names forward when we may not expect them.
I tried to make this as inclusive as possible. I do, I would like to see my successor meet some qualifications. I would like to see that they are actually involved in the school and in our community, which is why I put things like must be involved in at least one sport or club or other activity. Because if they aren't, if they aren't involved in at least one of those activities, how are we certain that they have at least a thumb on the pulse of what's happening in our school and in the students as well? Because this is all about the students. So if they are not involved in at least one school or community activity, then I believe that they should, that they would not be a good position to position.
You also could utilize sources of strength, and that program is finding your natural connectors, and your teachers know who those are as well.
I was actually involved with putting that survey that they put out a while ago together. I understand that was not taken very well. A lot of you in the audience may know that. But yes, I've been involved a little bit with sources of strength this year. I haven't heard a ton of, like, a ton much outside of that initial phase, though. Yeah.
Some of your connectors are meeting on Monday. It might be a group that could help get the rest of the application together, too.
Maybe just a little note on this one, because we got, it is so last at the end, and we want to get this all done and have it just going. But maybe, because I think this would be a great thing for the continuing passed on for every year and everybody to follow, because then maybe after we get through this, you could go back and instead of having actual dates for the times, is maybe saying by five o'clock the night of the first work session of the board in the month of May.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
That kind of thing, instead of putting any kind of dates or anything and no use for it. Just those little things like that, so they could be a great thing to follow for everybody.
I believe, yeah, that's, that was the idea. I was really meaning for all the dates to be a guideline of what it would be if we were to do it this year. And of course, I was looking, I was hoping for this document to serve as a guideline for future student representatives, for future board members, as what, as what to do going forward.
We did a lot of work on that.
You definitely did a lot.
So Colton, when this idea came up over the summer and we heard about other districts doing these, and the student representatives, and we got to hear them up on stage, when this was kind of being tossed around, you were the first person that came to my mind as one of our first potentials to do this work. And you've served us with distinction. You've put together an amazing set of work here and some guidance for this, and I just want to say thank you for all of the effort and the willingness that you put in, because this was not an easy task, and you're basically building the plane as we're flying it. And I just want to say thank you for everything you've done for us.
You're welcome, and thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you for being here. Did you ever feel too open about anything?
Not unless you, any of you have any more questions or remarks on this.
Maybe a good job.
Very well done.
Actually, someone would be considered your last meeting. Through May or through June, but you are transitioning to budget maybe.
Over the summer until I leave for OSBA.
We'll have to figure out the transition.
Yeah. And I believe that wraps it up.
Thank you, Colton.
Thank you, Colton.
Sorry that took forever.
No, it's okay. All right, well, then we're just going to go on to 6.5, which is policy updates. And these will be the first readings of the board of this, provided all the information to get going, and these will be no decisions on this evening. It will be 6.5.1 will be policy EHB for cybersecurity. 6.5.2 will be GC BBF slash GBBB F, paid family medical leave insurance. 6.5.3 will be IGBHD for program exemptions. 654 will be JGE expulsion, and 6.5.5 KL public complaints. Yes, will be the policy updates. Is there anything you need to add for these that are?
No, just really quickly, if, you know, there's community members watching, you can find them in the board packet when it's published. EHB, the cybersecurity is a new policy for us. Just there's been an uptick in cyber attacks, and so this gives guidance on how to address that. The next one, 6.5.2, the paid family medical leave, that's giving us guidance in response to the new legislature that requires all businesses to have family paid medical leave. Just a note, as a district, we're using a private organization rather than the Oregon-sponsored one. It's a significantly better program for us, the district. The 6.5.3 IGBHD, the program exemptions, it spells out how parents and aligns better if a family wants to opt out of a school activity. So it's really just upgrading our current policy. The expulsion one, JGE, also clarifies the rule of the board. And then KL, public complaints, that one, I think, gets upgraded or updated every other month as a different school district gets sued and OSBA lawyers take a look at the complaint process and says, boo, you might want to adjust it here. Most of the changes are pretty standard. I don't see anything that's causes concern, but if you do, we could absolutely have more conversation.
All right, well, then we'll go on to 6.6. St. Helens will start Friday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. And turn it up to Jessica.
Thank you. So the first item is to introduce some recent applicants for the budget committee. Just hand it up quick. We have, we posted vacancies last January and had three open seats, had one interested applicant who wasn't pleased, and, you know, the board has the option to appoint budget committee members throughout the year. And we had two students who have obtained an age of 18 and are now registered voters and might have been recruited by Mr. Amos to help us with the 2024 budget work. They have both submitted applications, which I believe the board members have reviewed and have invited them to join us next. They wanted to introduce themselves to the board and maybe explain why they were interested in serving as a budget committee after Mr. Oates. Yeah, yeah, so Wyatt, if you want to join us, like, and hopefully our other applicant makes. Anything super formal, but nice to meet you and love you.
I want to be on the, but I've been the St. Helens High School School District for 13, 14 years or since preschool. I actually wanted to, now that, you know, I'm a team registered voter, going to be moving into the, you know, real life. I wanted to say I have a voice and, you know, my school, my school and, well, soon previous school was run and, you know, have a voice of someone who actually went to the school district, you know, now have a voice for my recommendations and et cetera, et cetera.
Any other questions for Wyatt?
It'll be a fun learning opportunity.
You already won tons of afternines, so.
There will be a test soon.
It will be multiple choice.
That would be a little, maybe.
So again, I want to express an appreciation because I have been pounding the draw to get people on our budget committee for the last five years. And every year, it is a struggle to find anybody with an interest, whether they have comments outside of this space about how the district is run, whether there's a concern about funding, whether there's a concern about where our money goes. And it is a struggle to find community members to come in here and go through the process and understand it, and then get a better grasp on what's happening. And so to have a student and two students come forward and do this, I'm incredibly appreciative of your willingness to take this on and to be leaders in how to do this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Colton, I don't know if you want to sound a little bit, I don't want to hear you.
Well, I was kind of peer pressured. I'm kidding. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. You know, I'm kind of in the same boat as Wyatt. I've been in this school district ever since kindergarten, even though I was at Arthur Academy, which that's a whole different story on its own. But, you know, I fully transitioned to the St. Helens School District when I went to the middle school, starting in seventh grade. And I've been extremely active in my school and my community ever since. And I really wanted to learn more about how our school works, how our school district's budget works, and what I can do to possibly improve it or at least suggest improvements or changes for future generations of students.
And it comes down to the action item, the traditionally appointed named individuals to the positions. You have a copy of what our declaration was. Just in consideration of quo takes hold plans by recommending a one-year appointment to that position, but that's totally up to the board's choices while it's a student, so.
It's hard to commute from Oregon State for a budget meeting.
It could be done, but.
To say that we gave 12 or 10 years to them, so it's a much longer schedule.
So we're writing up, which is our next item, which is the revised budget calendar and our budget training. Now, the indicated that in light of graduation activities, if we could potentially look at the June 7th date and move it forward, that is optional, it's needed meetings, but I appreciate it the most. So again, this is just a request to modify the budget calendar and change that time up. That concludes my report.
Well, pretty much you said that the meeting before anyway, so everybody knows that, right?
Yeah, and if we can't get a recommendation from the budget committee, we'll need to continue to do probably the full, the recommendations of the board.
All right, so you two, that means graduation or graduate.
Choices, choices. They would be on the budget committee another year then.
All right, well, then we'll do 6.7, our super student department.
Yeah, and I've got the most important piece first here, and that's Licensed Employee Appreciation Week Declaration. These are fun declarations to read. However, what they really mean is we have fantastic staff supporting our kids and our community. So, Christie, I hear you, you're clicking over there. Are you going to pull it up, or you want me to just read it?
You go ahead and start.
Okay. So licensed, that generally is teachers, so that includes counselors, social workers, librarians, any certified employee, non-administrative, who gets certified through teacher standards and practices. That's what this week includes. Licensed Employee Appreciation Week Declaration. Whereas teachers mold future citizens through guidance and education, and whereas teachers encounter students of widely differing backgrounds, and whereas our country's future depends upon providing quality education to all students, and whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students, and performing community service, and whereas our community recognizes and supports its teachers in educating the children of this community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the St. Helens School Board of Directors proclaim May 8th through 12th, 2023, to be the Licensed Employee Appreciation Week. Be it further resolved that the St. Helens Board of Directors strongly encourages all members of our community to join with it in personally expressing appreciation to our teachers for their dedication and devotion to their work, adopted this 26th day of April 2023. So congratulations, and it's always a pleasure to recognize our great staff. Okay, I've got two other items that I wanted to share. I wanted to go through, it's kind of a bond update. Thoughts should be going out right now as we speak. Christie, can you possibly get my thumb drive, pull that up, and while you're pulling that up, I'll kind of share, and then we'll need to have a little bit of a board discussion on this. Probably one of the things that many students are thinking about, teachers, that's great, go ahead and leave it right there for now. We did have a couple of snow days, and I don't usually start talking about snow days, and if we've used up how many snow days until I feel like the threat of snow is gone. So this year, it's been kind of postponed a while, but I'm feeling like we may have passed the point where we have to worry about snow. So I've done the calculations, and I, it's clear that we have still enough hours to cover the days that we took for inclement weather within our current calendar. As a school board, we have days set aside that make up at the end of the year that we could add. Traditionally, if we don't go much over two or three days and we still have the hours, we have an added back. We had that year where we had, I think, five or six, we did add them back. So I'll leave that to the board for a brief discussion. We won't need to have, I would suggest that we bring it to a vote later after we have some time to reflect on it, but if you don't have a discussion now, I'm sharing the information.
I think I'd want to see the calendar and like the hours.
I was just going to say, I was trying to remember what, I remember looking, but I can't remember, and it wasn't in the Friday. It's all of us left for one week, and if we had to do more, it was going to be a quarter again every, whatever. So maybe we should survey the parents and see if they have one more day on it. I think there's only one, and make it more complicated to go into the next week.
So I can bring up the calendar next meeting and look where that would add to. Kelly, do you want the hours calculated out?
Yeah, I think the hours would be great, too. Just because we did take so many, we took our PD days also, so if we look at the elementary school, it'd be nice to know what those hours were as well.
Yep, I agree. Okay, now, I'd like to kind of point your attention to PowerPoint. This is our former beloved high school facade, which is. This is our former beloved high school facade, which is significantly changed, very excited. We came together back in 2020, knowing that the school was in, or had used up its frankly usefulness in this time to do either rebuild or new school. Go to the next slide, please. We came together as communities, spent a lot of time trying to decide what we could do, what we should do to make it safe. We determined that connecting it, and really like any household budget, as a district, we bold our community and talked about what could we afford? And what could our community afford? And so we did our best to stay within those boundaries. And so then the next slide shows the design that we came up. There is what the new facade will look like. We passed the bond, our community came together, supported us, so we're able to start moving forward. Going to go to the next slide. I'm excited to see that come together. You can see some posts when you drive by the high school now. The top post is where the height will be. Going to go to the next slide. There's the backyard courtyard. We're hoping that will be used for lunches and the performances. Next slide. Then we ran into something that we weren't really expecting. We passed the bond during the beginning of COVID. We anticipated, and all of our consultants and frankly anybody that you're talking with was anticipating a global recession spurred by the pandemic. And what we saw instead of that was an accelerated growth in production. Economy is continuing to fire up, but without enough workers, we had supply chain issues. So we worked through supply chain issues. Go and go to the next slide. And then, of course, I've shared this before, we're all very well aware of how inflation is impacting all of us. Go to the next slide. We're still able to land on a design like this. Very excited for it, but there's some items that have been removed. Talked about that. The upgrade of building B, HVAC is not able to go upgraded. It does have HVAC in there, but it's kind of limping along. The covered area that you saw in the other photo, that's a piece that was out, had to be removed, make budget. The parking lot, which we all know needs to be paved. We have a decision of a nice new science wing for our parking lot, you choose a science wing. So we've had to make some reductions. We're still going to have a fantastic school regardless. But one way forward, go to the next slide, was to look and see if we could get a matching grant. And so we did that, and we applied to the state of Oregon and got what's called the Awesome Grant. And we were actually the first school district that was drawn out. This is a lottery, and it's a $4 million matching grant. The matching piece has to come from a bond voted on by your community. This program by ODE is designed to encourage communities like ours to support bonds and also help pass bonds to complete projects. So we feel very fortunate that we're at the 4 million, we got the $4 million matching grant. So then go to the next slide. We worked with Piper Jaffrey to determine how could we add $4 million? Can we add $4 million and not increase what taxpayers are currently paying? Or extend the length of the current bond? And this is what the 2020, the original 2020 bond looks like. If you go to the next slide, you can see that little blue line. This is what our current bond on the ballot will do. It fills in that little blue space. The gray part that goes down is from community growth. And you can look outside our community, you can see, or within our community, you can see apartment complexes going up, construction across the way over here, any space that is open where people can slide in, construction, that's what's going on. That has distributed the cost of the original loan to give a little bit of a slice for us to slide in a $4 million match. So we put on the ballot a $4 million match that will not add, or I need to make sure I'm really clear on that, will not increase what taxpayers are currently paying this year. I do get questions quite often, well, what happens if it doesn't pass? What, are we going to get a savings in there? And the answer is yes. Most of our homes are around $300, $300,000, $300,000 assessed value is what our average is, give or take. That little sliver, believe it or not, is seven cents. And so for seven cents per thousand, we can add $4 million to the bond. What that means for a person whose home is assessed at $300,000, that's $21 a year. And if you divide that out by 12, that's about $1.75 a month is what it would, what you'd save if you didn't, if we didn't pass the bond, but we're hopeful. Going to go to the next slide. Here's what's on the ballot, and the ballot measure is 5295. And this is the exact title from the bond language that you'll see on your ballot if you received it. 5259 bond is secure state matching grant and complete the high school question. Show the district update repair high school issue of $4 million in bonds and receive $4 million state matching grant, no estimated tax rate increase. Going to the next one. So this is a video that is going to be pushed out, if it's not already, to social media and all sorts of places. So hopefully it'll play. Hopefully this will help. Hopefully then people turn down the music a little bit when they hear it for the fifth time. Go to the next slide. And this is a file, as a school district at this point, we just want people to get out and vote and have their voices heard. We like to have the $8 million to add to our project, but also we want our community to be able to make a choice. We're going to give you that money to complete and to add on or make do with what you have. And so that's what this was about. That is all I have for my spot. Any questions?
Do you have one of your district pieces?
That's my business. Thank you, Ms. Stone.
All right, then we're going to go on to 7.0, and this is visitors to address the board. And this is time for fellow comment on agenda. Do you have anything to request? All right, beautiful. All right, so we'll go on to 8.0, action items. 8.1, appoint the budget committee applicant.
I move we appointed two high school students to a one-year term.
Hold on a second. Then moving on to second and two, accept action 8.1. Approve Colton and Will into our budget committees. All those in favor?
Wyatt.
I mean Wyatt, sorry. I can't even believe I said that because my friends are saying Wyatt. Okay, sorry, sorry Wyatt. Anyway, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Now, that doesn't mean they can't apply again next year if they decide to.
Okay, there you go. So we expect you back in this room.
It's going to be so much fun, you're going to do it again, I promise.
So sorry Wyatt. All right, we're going to go on to 8.2, then approve the revised 2023, 2024 budget calendar with a little small change in meeting time.
Second.
Run it in seconds, accept action 11, 8.2, all those in favor say aye. Aye. 8.3, declaration of licensed employee appreciation.
Zoom.
A second.
Move and second and two, set that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and thank you.
And we're moving on to 9.0, upcoming meeting input. And that is the board executive session will be at 5:30 on May 10th, leading into our regular board work session at 6:30 on the same day. Anybody got any questions or anything else this evening? Before I review though, Katie, I want you to tell the kids that left that they owe Mr. Meason 15 minutes. Because they showed us names since we started 15 minutes. Say one more.
Yeah, I think we want to add an action item, and I neglected to ask how this was placed on there. The adoption of the math curriculum.
We do need to get that done today.
So since we have an adjourned, I move that we change our, modify our agenda to add action item 8.4.
I'll second.
Okay, so how would you like to exactly have that ordered then?
Approval of presented math curriculum materials.
Okay, all right. The 8.4 is approval of all of the math, I'm trying to see how you said it.
Adoption.
Adoption materials that you said earlier this evening, all those in favor say aye.
We need a first and a second on that.
Well, that was the agenda.
No, no, we just moved to put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
Now we got to vote.
Now we got to be the vote.
So I move, I move that we. No, we already added 8.4. Now I move that we approve 8.4.
I will second that we are.
Turn second.
Okay, all those in favor of the 8.4, for adding the 8.5 then.
No, no, we're just voting for 8.4.
We already added it, and now we're voting to approve.
Correct.
That's all right, Christie's got her notes, we're fine.
I disagree because his adding was actually to approve it. So to me, 8.4 is adding it even more.
I think we've had this.
Yeah, it's happened before. Everyone circles here.
So we added 8.4 as an amendment to the agenda. And then we now vote to approve that added item 8.4.
All right.
Because some people. Sometimes you move to modify the agenda and have an approval before you do that. But if we were all in consent, you did it.
All right, then are there, are we getting agreement, we're on 8.5 due in Southie.
No, we're on 8.4.
8.4, that's what I'm saying. Because you keep saying you already did it. All right.
So it happens after we go after 8:30.
All right, I swear I already said that one, then we will. All right, so then we're all in agreement with the word 8.42 and 8.5?
No.
See, that's what I'm saying.
We modified and add 8.4 for the vote. We did a, we didn't add it for an action.
It's there. So there's no 8.5.
We call for the vote.
Yes.
This has happened too many times.
I know what you're, I know what you're saying, that we need to make a motion to amend the agenda. You vote on that to amend the agenda, then you add the, but I think it's just a procedural thing. If the board is comfortable doing it.
I know, but one of these things we do really legally need to ask how to do this, right? Too many years we did do it that way. Okay, that's why I have to do this again. Right, I don't even know what number you want anymore, and I don't know what you want me to say anymore, so go for it.
8.4.
8.4 for votes.
Math curriculum.
Okay, all right, then 8.4, do you accept the math curriculum presented to Seating? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Are you sure that we can add now?
I think we've got it, we need it.
Next time, make sure you have it.
That's the trouble with this higher math.
It's a good thing, it's a good thing we're adopting some math curriculum.
We need to be able to show it to the board first.
These decimals always got us.
Yep, they have. All right, then we're getting 9.0, and I am skipping out, and we are going home, you guys.
We could talk about Mel's Rules of Order.
I guarantee you.
I appreciate that she wants to get it right.